Oh, sorry. My audio is on. Yeah, it should be working now. I don't know if you want to check in with them, but do you want me to continue or wait? Okay.
Hey, I'm here Levi. Please don't slow down or wait for me.
What was that?
Yeah, please don't slow down for me. Just keep going.
Okay. Sounds good. So there was a question asked about which areas the city should prioritize improving. And so this this heat map that you show here, that you see here kind of displays the areas that got the most support to for improvements. And so the and I should mention on the survey, it did highlight the areas that the city owns that are currently improved or unimproved. And so that did give kind of some context to the person taking the survey, but they could put a point on any point on this map. And the area where the regional park is was was the number one, followed by the, you know, the Ridgeline City Park was the second. And you see going down there, the area between about thirty two hundred south, twelve hundred west, River Hollow Park, Mount Vista Park, these, you know, and kind of goes down from there, but a lot of support really, you know, for the regional park Ridgeline Park was was shown there, but but also, you know, these other areas received some definite support there. There's a question about amenities that they would like to see and far and above splash pad. There are a lot of residents want to see splash pad in Nibley. And and then indoor rec facility is also high on there and then pickleball courts. And you see it kind of go down from there. A lot of different amenities that are that are recommended by by different members of the community. So there were within the plan, there was a comparison of these national standards, so National Recreation and Parks Association. They they published some standards on based on population size, what type of amenities. And, you know, when you look at the national standard could be provided in the community, but I just I just want to say that we didn't necessarily. This was one consideration of of the of different amenities to consider. But knowing that our community is unique, we have, you know, different demographics, different needs than than others. So really need to adapt it to our own needs, but but just showing there that there are there are some amenities that we should think about as our community grows to provide. As I mentioned before, a big focus of the plan is park maintenance. And I don't believe this was stated in the and, you know, our currently adopted plan. But we're stating it more explicitly in this plan that preservation enhancement of current parks is a priority. And capital improvement is really a secondary. So, you know, as far as expending funds, just making sure that we can maintain what we have. And also that if we're going to take on, you know, building new capital projects that we also that that we also budget for the maintenance costs for those new parks going going forward. And and the plan includes a detailed description of maintenance projects, you know, Rod was really involved heavily in the in throughout this process. They they had on their consultant team M G B and A, they had a he was he was the parks, head of parks parks maintenance at Salt Lake City. He was retired from there. And he he provided a lot of expertise in this and but, you know, working closely with Rod, adapting it to to our needs here, we have some things like a life cycle replacement schedule that helps point out. You know, helps us plan when things need to be replaced. It also points out some things we're a little behind, might be a little behind on, you know, that that were could have been installed thirty years ago and are kind of beyond their useful life. So the plan, the plan does point those kinds of things out. So beyond just new capital projects, our current inventory of of what we need. The recreation plan, and I have to give almost all the credit really to Chad in drafting this and working with with the recreation department. Is giving guidance to to how how we prioritize recreational programs. And and what we should look at when thinking about starting new programs and supporting existing programs we have. The and and really it's focused on building communities, supporting healthy lifestyles. And then sports and fitness program guidance, you see that list there. So things like, does it match the community interests? Does it come with positive outcomes? Is it is it innovative? Have are we taking into account participant feedback? So again, continuing with that engagement. So so it gives really detailed guidance going forward on, you know, it doesn't, the the recreation plan portion, it doesn't necessarily say specifically, oh, we need to do this specific program, but when an opportunity comes up, it gives guidance on which process we go through on, you know, whether we're going to start, for example, adult recreation program. Does it fit all of these these different different components? So looking back at kind of the the master plan, I mentioned that there were a couple of alternatives that were were screened that were looked at by the steering committee and and these, we actually did review these also with city council, planning commission and and parks and rec committee. A few months, you know, months, months back. But but this is a preferred master plan that that just points at, you know, at a high level, new amenities that to be provided in in certain parks. So there's some of these go into existing parks, but the majority are in, you know, in new parks. And then and then also the phasing of, you know, which kind of points to priority. So you see Ridgeline Park on there, the Nibley Regional Park, which we see really developing in phases. So you see that it's different, it's a little difficult to see there, but the yellow is one, zero, five years. The the more red color is five to fifteen and then and then the purple is is fifteen plus years. So so it's it's really more focused on fewer spaces for providing new amenities. So, you know, the twelve hundred west park, the Nibley Regional Park. The space on on Hollow Road that, you know, the previous plan called River Hollow Park and we're we're going to continue to call it that as well as Ridgeline Park. And then a few other improvements at a few other parks in town. I'll go, I'm going to go over the concept plans that are provided in in the the draft plan. This is the regional park area and you see this. You know, it's it's largely a sports complex and this is similar to, you know, what has been planned for this space for for several years. I think this plan has more space for the rec center area. And what that could could provide, you know, the rec, the rec center feasibility study will help determine really what's feasible there and and if it, you know, what partnerships that will in order to realize a space like this, we'll we'll we will need, but we really show, you know, a space for for all of the everything that's been kind of expressed, needs for indoors indoor indoor sports pools as, you know, rec center. And then there's also courts in there and and a playground, you know, a big playground. So that's what we're showing on on the concept plan and that and and these concept plans provide the basis for the the planning level costs that that are also provided in, you know, in the financial section that I'll go go into. And the the rec center, of course, is a a big chunk of that cost. And really, I mean, I'll get into it later of just just the reality that to provide something like this, and I think we all understand it's it's going, it's going to take more than kind of the the resources the city currently has or that we would project to have in the future. This is, this is provided for Ander Park and, you know, we had a few different iterations with Ander of and, you know, doing reconfiguring the space and doing doing something completely different. And to be honest, it that what's being proposed doesn't doesn't have a drastic change to what's what's at Ander. We heard that we wanted, you know, the steering committee, we want to keep the softball field, we want to keep the amphitheater there. But things like, you know, the the building that's there, the former Nibley City Hall is probably or Nibley Town Hall is is kind of, you know, eventually getting to the end of its useful life. And and the thought was that as we can replace that with with another building that that, you know, is closer to the amphitheater. A new pavilion with with more store, you know, with storage space. And then, you know, just provide kind of more picnic areas where 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 that was located. And then just improving the amphitheater, allowing for more seating, so things like additional bleachers. So just some improvements there on on Andrew Park. Recommended. This, we tried to look at, this is, this is just oriented, this is twelve hundred west. And south of thirty two hundred south, so where my cursor is here, this is the space that was dedicated with Nibley Meadows and the park there. And this is Nibley Farms and the and that space. And then and then this is the green waste site, you know, in the wetland right there. So there's a lot going on in in this space, but we we wanted to kind of look at it holistically, at least at a concept plan level. And so we we show kind of concentrated different amenities here that the city, you know, currently lacks. Things like a skate park, a dog park, a small splash pad, as well as incorporating a playground there. So a lot of amenities kind of in this space. And then more, you know, with the wetland in that area and 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 just trying to build on that to the north, keep keeping more open space, that would be kind of more trails and open space area. And then some some additional field space on the on the south side could be provided. So there there's some relation, you know, across twelve hundred west, but the idea was that these would kind of operate independently, where twelve hundred west is really a major thoroughfare. You know, that someone might come to the dog park. Yeah, they could go over to a soccer game as well, but most likely they're they're just gonna go over to the park, you know, Nibley Meadows for something like that. And then some improvements along this kind of linear park space, a trail and linear nature playground in that area is just envisioned on this concept plan. So one last one, this is down on Hollow Road, that's about a ten acre space, and this is more outdoor recreation focused. And and we felt like, you know, that was appropriate, given the kind of more rural context in that area. And and with its, you know, being being close to the Blacksmith Fork River there. So what's what's envisioned here is is a pond, you know, fish, a small kind of community fishing pond. An archery course, more naturalized playground, and then you see kind of some trails going through and potential opportunity, you know, if if there's a trail that ever kind of materializes along the Blacksmith Fork River could connect into that that trail system as well. Yeah. Potentially, but
that ever gets built, it'll be the the Justin Mon Archery.
I think I I think, you know, part of the idea that here is there is a lot of focus, a lot of funding opportunities for outdoor recreation, as we've found, as we've gone through the original park process. And so I think that's that's what is exciting about this space is kind of the grant opportunities of and providing something different, you know, for for the community that may not may not be provided in other spaces there. This map is a little bit confusing, but but I'm I'll explain, this is the they did a GIS analysis on open space preservation priority. Really, the lighter areas are areas that we ought, that, you know, we ought to think about preserving for open space and the darker areas kind of less less inclination for for preserving for open space. And so what what the consultant looked at is the the presence of sensitive lands, you know, wetlands. That that would be a higher score. The the and then you know, there was a lot of consideration and and this is what we've talked about, a lot of building upon the existing spaces we already have. So if it's right adjacent to a space, then that that was a higher priority. But if it but but let's say it's a quarter mile away, then that would be lower than if it were, for example, a mile away. So so it's kind of trying to space the open spaces throughout the community that way. So this this just gives some guidance on you know, when we look at different different pieces of ground, whether whether it be preserving those through the subdivision process or the city acquiring the land, just just give some some considerations to look at our whole, you know, both both our existing boundaries and our annexation boundaries of of which areas to focus on. Little more on on the strategy for preserving open space, you know, through the subdivision process, things like the, you know, the R P U D ordinance, the open space ordinance. Continuing to promote these as well as the Transfer Development Rights Ordinance are are ways to to preserve open space and then the city acquiring and maintaining new open space, really being strategic about that. And and we've within the plan, provided some guidance on when those opportunities arise, what 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 we should consider. So things like locations adjacent to existing and planned parks. And then reviewing existing land for suitability of continued open space preservation. And also looking at this plan and and, you know, its concurrence with with the Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan. Including the mapping, the maintenance costs of of the potential improvements. And then comparable development costs and estimate summarized capital improvement. And then and then also I I didn't include it in the presentation, but but something else that that will be incorporated into the the plan. It may not actually be in this draft, but but it's, you know, and for second reading, there there are a couple, and I'll I'll get into that a little bit later. We we would recommend that this this get a second reading. So there there are some additional edits that we like to incorporate based on, you know, both any feedback you have, but but as well as the the steering committee. But but another another thing is just the suitability of supporting our, you know, planned recreational programs and and, you know, is it is it, does it meet the need of our of our community that way? We can get more into the financial part of the plan, but I just wanted to summarize this and so and and Zion's Public Finance, they they were on the consultant team to provide an analysis of you know, different of looking at the costs and and ways to fund parks going forward. And yeah, I just wanted to point it out there, you know, bad news, Nibley is already tight on operating costs, doesn't have a lot of excess funding for capital costs to to fund this master plan. But the opportunity is that, you know, there are multiple funding sources available if we want to tap into them. And the residents have expressed willingness to increase taxes for parks and recreation to leverage those funds. You know, obviously the devil's in the details on all of this, but but just to point out that really and and this plan doesn't necessarily without without either increasing funds or providing or or getting obtaining additional grant opportunities, there's not a lot of opportunity to realize the park improvements that are in this plan. I mean, that's really necessary. And that's what came out of the financial analysis. If, I mean, we can't just we we can get some from impact fees, but not nearly what what we're envisioning here. Just a few things on the action plan. In the next zero to five years, you know, in order to realize the plan, focus on leveraging funds, budgeting for new and improved facilities. Ongoing planning of of these park facilities, so going beyond just these concept plans. Further study for recreational center and then developing the active transportation plan. And I I do want to to point out, the current plan includes trails. This plan it doesn't update the trails master plan. We're going through a separate process through the active transportation plan to update the trails portion. So that's why that that recommendation is in there. So we're we're working on that currently, exploring regional partnerships. And this is a summary. I mean, this is within the document, there's there's more detail there, but and then reviewing and updating land disordinances for parks and open space dedication. You know, beyond five years, a lot more funding, budget budgeting efforts, and then considering considering expansion of recreation programs. So so this was presented to Planning Commission and they they did recommend approval of of the plan. Staff's recommendation is approval for first reading. We I I just got an update of a draft that we would like to present a second reading that incorporates some edits from the last the last steering committee meeting. Took the consultant a little bit longer to get to me. I'd hope I hope to have it presented for first reading, but they weren't quite ready. And so we'd ask a staff to, you know, consider this for adoption at a second reading and and pass it for for first reading. Happy to get into any specific components of the plan, but that's that's summary.
Great. Thank you, Levi. We can ask Levi questions before the public has an opportunity to comment or ask Levi questions when the council takes that. They hear silence mean ready for the public hearing. So without objection to open the public hearing, open hearing is open. Seeing no comment from the public, Curtis will invite you to take part in the discussion with the council as we go along. So don't bill out, be speaking to the public hearing. You have something important or important. There's no objection from the council, we'll close the public hearing. And the public hearing is closed. Next item is consideration of this resolution twenty four seventeen on our next parks and recreation. Nathan, make a motion to approve first reading. We have a motion to approve for first reading and the second from Kate. Thank you very much.
So interesting process. I learned a lot. One of the things I think I kept trying to pull out of this process was to get like guidelines or standards for us to with our open space parks, et cetera, such as like, you will never build people on courts and people's playgrounds or things like that, right? For it to be so far. As I worked with Chad and talked to Rod and some of those that I learned that that kind of is a separate thing for this, but I really liked that we did focus in on what we do to acquire space, that we have to go through a process now. But as a talk, I kind of felt like one thing that we need to think about is as for ourselves and future councils is how much cheap, how do you force the council to actually go through all those processes? It's not legislation ordinance. So that was just one thing that came up for me that I've been thinking about. You know, we can't give you four second reading if you guys have solutions that, you know, it's for us to take away or acquire, it was those steps to how do we force ourselves? Just good nature, of course, future counts just to do that. So a good process unlocked, etc. There's some updates that I think we can still work on, but.
Yeah, and and to your to your point, Nathan, we we did talk about that and and I I I think we can work on an ordinance that would actually point to, this is the process we need to go through. These are the considerations we need to make in, you know, before we acquire land. Yeah.
I think I have to give you my my you have to put this on my on my quotes, that the next council will be just as smart as this council. I modified it slightly.
It's more positive. Let me, we've grown up.
I guess anyways, we're on this. I did think that on page thirteen, on page thirteen, the table is pretty, and I think that they did a good job, a good job of technology. Like these recommendations for the amenities that we're supposed to have don't necessarily apply to new specifically, like they suggested that by twenty forty, you have five tennis courts.
Right.
Is that four too many?
I think they did a good job of like commenting.
These are the comparisons to the national averages, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I wonder, uh, we did put five night hours survey results for this.
No, that was for the active transportation plan. Which we're 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 working through, we're working through right now. Yep.
So it's like this table, please look at two favorite parks from Nibley. And I was kind of just surprised at Clear Creek Park. People don't recognize this Clear Creek Park because we didn't label it as this one.
We're about, we we've already ordered a sign. It's gonna say Clear Creek Park. We'll see if that changes with the sign, but. Maybe.
Like the maintenance thing that needs to be done. In the coming year. So forty four is listing Heritage Park Maintenance To Do List. Lifecycle Replacement Schedule. And so in top of the diamond field. And other, but there in the middle, it's listing out zip line.
Yeah, that that's one of the, that's one of the errors. I'm glad you caught that. That, yeah, we. We. We're, we've got that fixed in the, well, we'll get that fixed in the next draft. That was, that was, that was an error. Yep, yep, good catch, yep.
Page eighty two, it's showing us, um, the future install list for, you know, different park amenities. So this is looking at. Okay. Um, so this is looking at the life cycle replacement schedule for the proposed regional park. So on this middle column, it talks about the install year being twenty twenty five for all these. And a couple of them, like the tennis court, football court, we can list twenty twenty three. So this is like, it's telling you why we're listing twenty twenty five, and so we're like. Getting ready to start installing the park forever.
Yeah, the twenty twenty three one's weird, and we should fix that, but, um. You know, there there is that note below that says that these need to be. Adjusted based on the actual install year. We just didn't project out exactly when that year was. We we kind of have a timeframe of recommended next zero to five years, we should get started on the regional park. But those would be adjusted based on when it was actually installed. No, I mean, we could, we could adjust it a little bit and and try to be more reasonable of of. You know, when we when we plan on it going in, but as far as for the purpose of this chart, we just took. They they just took next year and and went out from there. Yeah, the twenty three, that's kind of weird.
Yeah.
No, no, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think we're. I'll just leave later.
Yeah, we can get them in the next draft.
So it amazes me to think. After we give grants and. Whatever to secure. Grants and I'll say it bonds perhaps, uh, to secure development of all this. What are impact fees we're gonna turn into or could turn into? They're they're enormously same, they're abnormally high compared to other cities. Because of all that Nibley City has acquired and. In preparation for development, that land value inflation has helped that. So I think. What would, what would the council do with? Impact fees once we get more developed. I'll say that's a good thing for that. If we can build these things out, plenty ways to pay for them. Very nice. Parks and open space facilities. Which is fantastic. We should, we should strive.
Yeah, and I I would just point out that I think the plan, it's kind of. It's kind of scalable in that. Depending on what resources we have, so. Our number one priority, maintain what we have, and then and then we've laid out. You know, priorities of of new capital projects after that, but. If for some reason. You know, our growth slows, um, and we don't collect as many impact fees. Uh, unforeseen, you know, we're projected to grow. Uh, and continue to grow, but like, let's just say that happens, and we just need to focus more on maintaining what we have. We can. We can do that still, and our plan still supports that that scenario.
Could be wrong, but when they did the Firefly Park, it wasn't on the master plan. You qualify fifty thousand minutes to build it out, so even though it's a plan, it's distributed.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah, so so Firefly made it into the next plan, but meant the opportunity. Other land impacted. By the recreation conservation. That Green Canyon is still. Impacted that Nibley City had a chance to buy recreation land and then with the promise of reimbursement. And so there wasn't, and and this is to Nate's point, you know, it's the. You plan and plan, and you know, you stick with the plan, but you don't. Uh, but the opportunity came up to buy that twenty acres for forty thousand, four hundred thousand dollars. And by the time the other land sold that was compromised, we received one point six million dollars. For the purchase of that plant, of that park. Plus, I guarantee. Six or eight, I can't remember now, wraps tax fifty percent match for development on this part, so. I certainly don't bemoan the Firefly Park, even though you're right, it wasn't. It wasn't in the, it wasn't in the master plan. When we purchased the property. It was in the next best, it's in the perfect plan, but that. That's an iteration after we purchased.
Showed quite a few improvements for the regional. Park area, but are we, the feasibility stuff come back for some letters that solely for the indoor building?
Uh, it's it's not just the in indoor building. Uh, are you talking about the cost or the or the?
I think the feasibility study is specific to.
Right.
There's a place, there's a place on that land, putting all these other, all these other amenities. Probably don't.
Right, yep. That's correct. And you know, yeah, Zion's, when they did their analysis, they didn't really mince their words. They they kind of led with that in the analysis. Can't afford all of this until you get more funds. I mean, that's the reality.
To start someone.
Yep. Yep.
And I appreciate all the work that's gone here and the money that's spent, so if most of this is the dream. Would be better to do a feasible study, but more was.
So I think the feasibility study is supposed to help us understand what's. And again, the feasibility study is related to indoor rec space. Maybe you should do another feasibility and what's practical. For the rest of this park to develop. It, you know. But I I think that's, that's what a feasibility is, is this feasible, is this practical, is this dual?
In in the little ball and rinse line, our park just sucks the wind out of you. See how much it takes to do anything, because. I thought we can do this more farm and do that, and then once you get to that, you're just like, people do have one moment at a time. And staff is fantastic, getting matching grants and stuff. It's a lot of staff time, work, everything is limited, so. I love the dream, I'm a secret about about spoken, but yeah, I don't play a long war yet.
Well, wait till you care about the expectation of swimming pools.
Yeah.
This, this doesn't. Consider swimming pools.
I mean, there's a place, there's a placeholder for a swimming pool. There is, there is a placeholder for swimming pool, so it is in the cost estimate. But. In the operating costs, I I I want I want to mention that the operating costs do not take into account the recre- the rec center. So they they project out the other spaces and and what it would take to to maintain those, but the rec center is like a different beast that. We didn't, we didn't get into the the cost of of maintaining that. But there, but for capital costs. The numbers in the plan, it's just. It it's gonna need. Other funding beyond really what we've planned for here.
To be honest, my my perspective, I'm being counsel a lot of six years, and I love my half acre lot, open space and stuff like that, but. If you do answer that you don't have yards, then that makes this more valuable and the goal of it is. I've been one eighty on it, uh, six years ahead, but. And so that, to me, that makes it more valuable. Maybe that's why we voted.
Yeah.
To raise tactics. Or why they put this more priorities, or this, they had had some. You don't have half acre, you have your own soccer field.
Yep.
There are very few private soccer fields. What about archery, we can just. Archery is definitely not possible.
Yeah. We see a lot of, a lot of effort.
Curtis, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you have anything you want to add, we're all ears. Levi covered it, and they, but then they did a good job.
Yeah, and I think I think what we've heard is it's, it's a, and. You know, just from the community, it's a huge value of the ma- the vast majority of our residents. Those parks and open spaces, so. Yeah.
Not just the event, not just happening.
Right.
Even in that one, I think one of the answers as a council is where we adjusted our impact fee for, um, parks. Stuff was probably one of the highest in the valley. And just where parks is such a priority, I think that's how we're like. Even then, the one developers is just the increase in art impact fees was having a million dollars that reflect from there. But a million dollars might be like, it's even a pavilion.
A really nice pavilion. If you want a really nice pavilion, yeah.
Maybe construction costs will down. Upper price to go down. Curtis, I actually thought of a question for you. So this is a, and maybe come to the mic so Justin can hear anyone else. And maybe it's a short answer. This is a park and recreation plan. So a lot of the plan is very focused on physical facilities. Whereas a recreation program is an asset that's really. Uses, uh, those physical facilities, but it's it's a whole nother animal unto itself, right? It's a, it's a, it's a soft asset instead of a hard asset, maybe. Do you think that we're dealing? I'm not changing the scope, Levi, don't don't worry too much. Do you think we're dealing with the recreation side? Of. Nibley's Parks and Recreation Plan enough?
That's a good question. I'll answer the best that I can, just with my experience and I. Hopefully makes sense, like, say this, if I ramble on for a minute, if it doesn't make sense very, very minute, but. Um, I I think that it does. Um, I look at our rec programs and where we're at. And there are a lot of our rec programs that we are getting. Closer to capacity of what we can do, so I'll just use this as an example with. Excuse me, with our spring soccer program, which is our, by far our biggest recreation program that we do. I mean, this spring was the biggest that we had, and we had something in the nature of eighty six teams from pre-K to high school. And so just considering that, and we did a very good job, and we were able to utilize most of the park space that we had, not all of it by any means, of course. Um, but if if I'm understanding and if I'm answering the question correctly too. I think we're doing a good job of looking at that and saying, with these park plans, it's taking into consideration. What growth we're expecting and looking at, um, to be able to continue to offer these programs with the growth that we're having. So I I I would say the short answer is yes, but there's a little bit of detail behind what I would say.
Yeah, it's, uh, the the physical assets kind of. Inform us about what we think. Our recreation program looks like.
And if I could, if I could add to that, I mean, that's that's, I think that that's on point that there is a. There is a connection between in the park, you know, what's in the parks plan and what the needs are for recreation. But there's also, um, and this was really more developed in-house than by the consultant, because it was not. Um, it was not within their scope to develop, to develop a a recreation plan. I mean, we. We just didn't include that in the scope, so that. We updated, and you know, Chad, Chad did really. It was his task doing this work, um, updated the existing recreation plan. Um, which, which is more the program elements, um. And and though, so that is, that is in in here, in this document, it's it's integrated in the document, you know, was reviewed. Uh, we provided comments on this, and I think, I think the public engagement that happened informs this. As well, but it just, it wasn't developed by the consultant, it was developed in-house.
Okay, and kudos to Chad, he did a great job on it. I'm not sure why I didn't bring that point up before tonight, but I.
Yeah. I guess Chad's humble in that aspect, but yeah, he put a lot of work into this.
Engage guidance against steps of like for future chats, et cetera. Which I love it. I think it does. One of the things I liked, that's, that we had that. Date that, that we kind of enumerated how things operated, let's work and. That's kind of written down.
Yeah, and I, I'm not gonna derail this plan at all, I, I think of. My hometown, its recreation program extended well beyond. The boundaries of Pocatello. Right, I mean. I learned how to wrestle three C and winter camp and. Two week canoe trips, camping trips, all outside of Pocatello, but in the Pocatello Recreation Program. So. Another dream someday is to think about the incredible resources we have available to us for a recreation program. That don't mean build any parks. Use the. Use what's up there already. Sorry.
Teach others how to use it, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah, give, give, well, for me, it was. My family didn't do any of those things and. That was a great opportunity for me to learn how to do those things, or get involved with these things, right? Okay, thank you. Okay, um. Please jump, jump up there.
I do have a watch. They look at operation costs. Do they look at water? The water aspect of. Those fields. And, I mean, we're looking at drilling a well now just to subsidize what we need. So when we do these, are we looking at that aspect as well, is this gonna cost us another well? Another three million gallon tank? I mean, I'm just. Just thinking of these things, you know, as we go forward. So something that's involved in these plans.
I mean, I, I think it is as far as the cost of providing the water to irrigate the land, I'm not sure. If it goes so far as, we gotta build a new well. I, I think, I think it is reflected. They're just the irrigation costs, and obviously the sprinkler system and, and those kind of, but. No, I mean, it's a good point. May require more source, cause, cause it's, cause it's water intensive, especially something like this. Yeah.
I believe if this plan drives, another plan drives the well. Not sure which one's the tail and the one's the dog. Yeah, it's a good thing we don't have to pay a water bill, huh? At least we don't see the bill that we have to pay.
Still expensive, I mean.
All right, anything else, counsel, or shall we vote on first reading? Let's vote, okay. Those in favor of advancing the, uh. Draft Parks and Recreation Open Space Management Plan Resolution twenty-four seventeen to second reading, please say aye. Rather than opposed. Thank you, Levi, thanks Curtis and Chad, Nicole Group, Steering Committee. And thank you, counsel. Cool, we have one more thing to talk about tonight, and this is, uh. Indicating an intent, it's an intent to adjust the municipal boundary with Logan. City.
Guess before we do that, uh, Tom wanted to. Share this with, just to show that Justin is in attendance.
That proves it?
Yeah, that proves it.
Probably gonna root me here. Man, last time I'm sending you pictures.
If I was sitting like you are, I wouldn't be in this.
Justin's got the best feet in the house.
So good for you.
Fishin's on par for sure, for my abilities.
Still works. All right, um, yeah, I'll, I'll give some background on this one, uh. So, as, as you might remember, um, Watermark LLC. Uh, they, they own a property. Uh, uh, near twelve hundred west and, and twenty-two hundred south. The old twelve hundred west, but we'll call it. Right. Um. And. And they, and, and the council did approve an annexation agreement that granted zoning on the property. Which allows for construction of a hundred and eighty multifamily and townhome units upon the annexation. Um. They have requested to di- they, they, they requested to disconnect from Logan with the intent to then annex to Nibley City. Um, however, uh, you know, after, after receiving that application to disconnect, uh, we, we engaged. And really, you know, Logan City, uh, reached out to, to. To our staff and, and, um. Offered kind of a, another path forward that's, that's provided, you know, through, through Utah code, and that's a boundary adjustment. So rather than a disconnect and an annexation, this is, this is a, uh, what we're pursuing is, is a boundary adjustment. Between the two cities, um. The. In addition to this watermark property. Uh, it's, it's being proposed to also include. A, a small section of the Thomas Edison Charter School, so Thomas Edison Charter School, they, they did a, a. Parcel boundary adjustment, um, when they, when they added some land, well, that, that was never annexed into Nibley City. So they, they technically have a portion of their property that's in Logan City, so this would include that. And what's also being proposed is to include three additional residential properties that are along the highway. And, um, you know, the intent here is to make a more intuitive defined boundary in this area, um. With, you know, bound really by twenty-two hundred south with, and, and highway eighty-nine, ninety-one, Nibley kind of to the south. South and west and Logan, or south and east and Logan to the north and west, um. The first step in the process for this, uh. Boundary adjustment, this proposed boundary adjustment is for both cities to pass a resolution. That, that indicates the intent to, for, for the boundary adjustment, um. And then, and then there's required noticing, uh. That, you know, two affected entities and a protest period. Uh, and. At least sixty days after the, this resolution is passed. You, the, then a public hearing can be held on, on the boundary adjustment. And it can be considered by ordinance. The, the boundary adjustment would be finalized between both of the councils. Uh, this is, this is on the, um. Logan City agen- uh, City Council Agenda for the sixteenth for their ne- for their next meeting. It's in a, it's in a workshop and it's kind of similar to first and second reading, they, they have a workshop and then, and then it, it would be considered in a second reading. Um. I.
I usually start at five thirty.
Five thirty is what Tom's saying, we can, we can check on the. Agenda, I'm not sure if they've noticed it just yet, but, um, but yeah, Mike Dismoni, their. Community Development Director, he told me it's gonna be on that agenda, um. This is the area we're talking about, so. If you can follow my cursor, this is, this is that watermark area here. Um. And then. To the south, that's, that's Thomas Edison, and then out on the highway, there's those three residential properties. Um, so that's what's being proposed as part of this. Uh, boundary adjustment, so really it's. It's. All of, all of this area is in Logan City, and it would annex to Nibley, so there's no, there's no land in Nibley that would. Go in the other direction, it's all, it's kind of one-way. Transaction there, um.
The Logan calendar shows the sixteen, meeting of sixteenth of the. City Council at five forty.
So it is staff's recommendation to approve this resolution, we, we included in the packet to waive second reading, uh. Partly, at the time, we, we wanted to sync up the schedule with, with Logan City. Um, and reviewing this further, if, if, if the council wants to consider this further at second reading, it's fine. Um, that's not, it's not going to. Change the timing, really, cause we, um. Logan City, they have to wait to pass, I guess they're, they're not going to pass it on the sixteenth. They're, they're, they're gonna wait till that, that next meeting to pass it anyway. So that was kind of the reason initially to waive the second reading is we were under the impression, and just to kind of sync up with, with Logan's timeframe to do that, but. Um, one. You know, and, and, and this is again, just an, it's an intent to. Um. To adjust the boundary, it doesn't finalize it. Uh. One thing that we were hoping would be. Uh, done prior, prior to hearing this, that isn't, um, is that the. I, I guess the, so Watermark, when, when we met as, as staff, you know, Nibley City staff and, and the mayor was, was there as well. Um, and, and Logan City staff, we, we talked about. You know, these three properties. Notifying them and, and just making sure that they're on board with this, uh, boundary adjustment, those three residential properties. As well as, as Thomas Edison, um, Charter School, and the three. Uh. The three residential properties, the. Uh, representative from Watermark mentioned they would reach out to them, and I guess they've tried and they haven't. They haven't been successful, is, is what they've told us, um, and getting a response from them, uh. The way that state law is written. The, the two cities could choose to do this boundary adjustment with or without their, their consent. Just, there's some thresholds on the amount of land and the value of land and the lion's share of that being Watermark. And Watermark being the proponent, it could happen anyway, but. Um, we thought, you know, we should reach out and make sure they don't have a problem with this, so. Um. That's something that, you know, we could, that the council could wait for if, if you'd like. Uh, but if you pass it, I mean, either way, we would, we would reach out to them, it's just, it's just at what stage. Either we or, or the proponent or Logan City, some, somebody would reach out to them between the three parties.
So the border wars between Nibley and Logan started fifteen or twenty years ago over. Something as. Real in people's minds. But perceived to be that. Nibley was. On a rampage to annex property. And people that were in the county wouldn't have anything to say. About whether they were going to get annexed into Nibley, or not, that myth was perpetuated a couple of different ways. But it, we're still healing from that misconception, in fact, the. The reason that those three properties are in Logan and not still unincorporated in the first place is all a result of. A perception that Nibley was. Overreaching on annexation. And so. It's, it's, it's my concern, I think our staff shares it. That. I would number one prefer those three properties that are so far. Not involved in this discussion, find out with a official public notification. What, what's Nibley doing, Nibley, we said twenty years ago, we didn't want to be in Nibley, and now Nibley and Logan are. Staining up or conspiring to make us be in Nibley after all. So I would much prefer those propellers to have. An unofficial notice to give them a chance to react to it instead of the. The government letter that shows up. In the mailbox. And I would even go so far. We don't have to make that decision right now, and we could drag them along in the boundary adjustment, but hey, if they don't want to come to Nibley, they'll make them go to Nibley. And so that's why we're, I think we're being sensitive about. About how fast we're moving on this, and we thought we had it all figured out, first Nibley was going to talk, our, our staff was gonna talk to those three properties. And Logan said, oh, we'll do it, and I thought that sounded better, you know, you can talk to the. City you're breaking up with, or city that's breaking up with you first, before you talk to the city they're gonna date next. But then the. The developer. Which is different than anyone you've met, if, it's not the watermark guys, it's the actual developer, he said, oh, I have a relationship with these guys, I'll reach out to them, but. He has, and then we get all of them yet, so.
Well, this only extends to those three properties, cause I know there was talk. Years ago about making eighty-nine, ninety-one the border.
Logan's long-term annexation plan says twenty-two hundred south, and this is south of. Twenty-two hundred south, except this property, the watermark property. And eighty-nine, ninety-one would be the dividing line between Logan and Nibley, and we should all do this massive. Package deal swap. And in fact, the, what was originally the Peterson Farm Store, Ellis Equipment. Which is in Nibley would go to Logan, and. This proposal is only about a boundary adjustment on the property you see on the screen, nothing else. So Logan has softened on this, I remember when Watermark was here, we said, eh, well, you got your. We got your, uh, work cut out for you, cause you have to go get disconnected from Logan. Before you can annex to Nibley, and then long, oh. Logan said, oh, let's just do what's easy, let's just do a boundary adjustment.
At least that's what we know so far. We'll see when it goes to the council.
I specifically asked, plan, have you talked to your council about this? No. So, maybe the sixteenth will be an interesting game.
Talk to the mayor, right? But not the council, but yeah.
So we're using, we should just table this next discussion?
Uh, definitely you don't do second reading. You, you could do first reading, but don't, don't second. And I don't know, I'll take your, to you smoothly, but.
I, I think that's fine, yeah, I think that's fine, just, just to, first reading, pass for first reading, as, as I mentioned that. It's just changed, there's been a lot of communication the last few days, that's kind of. Changed the dynamic of this a little bit, and looking at the timeframes and. Um, there is a need to coordinate with Logan City to make this. Go run smoothly, uh, but. You know, I think each council operates independently of what. Their intentions are, and so I don't necessarily think you need to wait for Logan to decide. Like, Nibley City can still say, oh yeah, we support this. Whether or not Logan supports it, um, so I don't think you necessarily need to wait for Logan's. Uh. Discussion, I, I mean, I, I think it's, I think, I think it'd be good to. Listen and, um, there might be something to glean from it, but, but if, if Nibley City is supportive of this coming in. Um. Then I think you can make that decision independently, but I thi- I think, I think, uh, Mayor Jacobson's, uh. Point about the other properties is probably worth. Taking extra time to reach out to, that, the, the properties that. May or may not even know about this.
I'm gonna follow, I'm gonna follow that with, do you know, do you know whether. Mike has talked to the council about this, he said no before.
I think the sixteenth might be the first time.
I think Logan should take the first step.
Yeah, just continue this until after Logan's game.
And they're gonna have a couple meetings, but I think.
We'll know a lot after the show.
Pretty confident about this passing Logan.
Yeah, he was pretty confident with giving my results. Eh, I don't know, you guys, it's a political move, okay?
They also like having a say.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's why I thought first reading would be okay because of those three properties, I don't think they're necessarily. Gonna find out we did first reading and passed it. Until they get a notice and that'll be later, but the new wrinkle for me in this real time in this meeting is. A message to the Logan City Council. Not those three properties, it's a message to the Logan City Council that, that says, hey, look, this is your planner. Bringing you this proposal, this is not Nibley City pushing this proposal. We've told Watermark, well, you go deal with Logan and then come deal with Nibley. And if we take the first step, we might be telling Logan that. We're dealing with the developer before Logan deals with the fellow. Okay with that?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah, but like I said, there's not. We, we had it, we had a schedule and that, and it completely changed, so. There's no.
Until after the sixteenth of, until our next meeting, okay, tell our next. That's a very appropriate piece, you stated it perfectly. Oh, and a second to continue deciding that a sixteenth. So I'm sure that we change the six, sixty, say sixty-sixth.
Yeah, we. Yeah, that doesn't work.
If the timeline's not good with Water, Watermark, they can always still pursue with um. This, this connecting will blow in, in the comment here, this is just another option, I understand.
They might, but the county is, they don't like that and they've tried to. Put a wrinkle in that, this is the, and, and if you read state code, this really is the preferred method. So, we've done it.
Where two cities agree, this is what we should do. The other method is you have to go through an ugly breakup, it's really fun. Okay, so uh, any opposition to voting, the motion is to continue this item until our next city council meeting. See, no opposition to voting, those in favor of continuing, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed to continue? Good, we'll take it up again. Okay, uh, that brings us to the last item on our agenda, that's council and staff reports. Justin, you wanna go first so you can go hang out with the kids or something?
Yeah, sure, thanks. I'll uh, be really brief, uh, we had a, what I thought was a pretty good emergency training. And this week, we uh, set up a fully operational E O Cs and had. We had staff out and checking, actually do things, so it was uh, pretty entertaining as well as educational, we learned quite a bit. And uh, felt like it was a good opportunity. Just side with something that I've been talking about and hoping for a long time and Chris Searle really took it by the horns and. Worked to get it done, but the uh, two LDS stake centers in the city will soon have transfer switches, which will. Allow us in the event of a major uh, catastrophe to be able to pull generator over there and light up. The church and use as a uh, refuge facility, if you will, so pretty excited about that. And thought it was great training, we topped it off by having lunch out of uh, what we consider our emergency food rations, you'll have to ask Tom and Cheryl and Steve. What they thought about lunch, but it was good, a, a good exercise, I thought. And I don't have anything else unless you guys got questions.
Thank you very much for uh, tuning in, even if you're not here.
Uh, Justin, I asked you today about the uh, water.
Uh, sorry, I can't hear.
Did you look into the Dripping Fountain situation that fired by Park?
Yes, I did talk to Rod and ask Rod to get after it, get on it, and so it is on his list and I'll, I'll double check with him and follow up.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Justin? Okay, thanks, Justin, we'll uh. Okay, you wanna go next?
After me, I care about this, uh, food, or emergency food. Two things, I think Norm is in the council member who wasn't in attendance for the meeting that. Streets, it was a good meeting, I'll have a chance to take a look. The minutes, but it was, it was a really neat experience to have that. The community residents come in, council prepared, um, so willing to say. They have a concern and be willing to listen to all of it and solve, it was like this gigantic council meeting, this was a positive experience. Just wanted to express thanks to all those who helped set that up and at. Which make sure that's a lot of staff behind this thing, so thank you for that. And then I'm a little curious to know, uh, based upon some Facebook conversations that I've been involved in. Has Nibley City received any more than usual um, comments about the light from thirty-two hundred? Not necessarily switching eastbound traffic, east westbound traffic. They would expect it to. Just curious, I've called you personally before, Tom, but this, this was quite a lengthy conversation with people. From the entire valley, people from Smithville and, and other places, Logan, Nibley expressing concern with that. And um.
The concern is the delay, how I am to wait.
Is sometimes it doesn't switch on, I've called Tom before that, been there and then. Tom can tell you when he was able to resolve that, but other people are expressing the same experience. And so I encourage them to. That one of their houses would be to call the city, you guys have a good relationship with UDOT and can express. How often that might be happening, how often this is.
I haven't received any complaints, but um, I'll, I'll reach out to my connections there and see what we can do. The last time that you brought it up, well, not the last time, the time before, um, it, it did end up being a programming issue, so it was, it was good.
People just don't know where to go, maybe there's better places to, it just. There's someone else also giving me to a UDOT. Space that they can acknowledge the issue.
Yeah, no, those comments are great, if, if they wanna direct them to the city, we can do our part and if, there, there are other ways, but. We might have a little better, bit better uh, results, but thank you.
First off, I want to thank the mayor, keeping his commitments nearly fit, he came out as excited. It's a commitment to you, Fred. You had fun, haven't you? So, I would encourage all of you to take advantage of uh, with it. It's actually a really good time. So, I've been almost every day this week. He hasn't been this week, yeah. You wanted to say thank you for my road, my house was resurfaced or sealed today. Communication and everything, slick. It was plenty of time of preparation, it was very clear, and so. Thank you for that, because I think that really helped, there was an expectation at times and. Discussion and there was one comment brought up about the crosswalk. Heritage, the one that's furthest north across lock. It comes right in front of the traffic home and you know where all the trees and stuff are. No, yeah, right near house. And I was driving back nearly there today, there is some obstruction coming south. Because I had a gal walk around, I didn't see her till she's. So. There, we didn't see her until she walked into, this is where it was going back or something.
Was she coming from the east or what?
She was walking from the west to the east.
So those bushes right there, by the.
They're, yeah. But there was definitely some obstruction there, so it's definitely something that needs to be looked at. Here, cuz hey, she had walked down the street.
Steve, you made a note. Thanks.
She was on, she was on her part. Scared till she stepped out into the street, there was just, there was some blockage right here on that.
Like where the sign is?
And it's not pretty big, but it's clearly not like their purpose, it's a volunteer, so it. No, it's a trash tree.
Good job, thanks.
I just was wondering what the new signs are in, the sign posts are for the round fire poker. There's several fixment pads and signposts have gone on.
That is the next grant from U R for learning pots. And that is actually an Eagle Scout project.
Well, I don't know if the Eagle Scouts or even some other kids, one of those cement pads got a whole bunch of initials and names. Fingered it before trying.
The Eagle Scout kid did it? It would, he, he did the work. So it wasn't the Eagle Scout and what the initials add.
Thank you, Phil Brooks, for the awesome fix on thirty-two week, that was really cool to watch, sorry, I shouldn't get there in time to help. But I drove by and it started and then I can pick it in or two later and it's perfect, it looks like you guys are gonna do it, so that was awesome. And I, we credit everything that people just don't know to do. As quickly as well as shit, so, sounds crazy. Um, one other thing I just noticed uh, in the roundabout, the light that was hit before. The light. Or it looks like it got some recent damage, I don't know how bad it is, but I just say next time you go, it's literally like the one right next to stops. Something like, there's a pole, yeah, the pole got dinged, so yeah. Okay, so. The pole is not, and that. I think it's just got a big being in it. Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, just make sure. And yes, the usual update on Purple Road. My navigation. Are you open with that? Mark, you're next.
Levi? Uh, just briefly, our, our act of transportation plan is marching along, it's probably about two thirds to three quarters the way. Done, you know, consultants doing good work and, and we're getting good feedback from our steering committee and, and staff. Um. Right, right now, we're, we're looking at rec, you know, specific recommendations in the plan, um. So appreciate feedback that steering committee's given, um, Aaron and, and others that are involved there. Um, I think that's, I think that's it for me.
Couple updates, I'll start with the twelve hundred west, phase three and four um, progress on construction. They're reaching a point where there, there's a whole bunch of intricate little things going on, landscaping's happening right now. They're doing final grading, um, today and yesterday, they were tearing apart the intersection in front of uh, Sheridig. Sh- Sheridan Ridge? Sheridan Ridge, thank you. Um, Stonebridge, excuse me, Stonebridge at twenty-nine eighty south and uh, there, there was a little glitch this morning with a bus. But uh, they, they basically closed that down for a bit while they were doing the work, um, what you'll see next is not a lot. Be about ten days of just nobody there, they're pulling crews off. I mentioned before that one of the strategies of bidding these things is to leave a, a flexible completion date. Allowing them some flexibility to move, move uh, crews around, I know it's an inconvenience. But uh, the detour is, is pretty good, it's not a big detour, you're not going too far out of the way. To get where you need to go in any, in any direction, but by the end of the month, that should be paved. After that, we wanna keep it closed as they put the barricades. That way, we're not interfering with any travel cuz it'll be really narrow, we. Two eleven foot lanes, it'd be hard to put those concrete barricades and then there'll be some striping and some final work in there, so. Um, but just be patient with it, you won't see anything going on for about ten, ten business days. As they're waiting for the, the pavement crew and this other work to be done. I've, I've been getting some calls, um, texts from Justin forwarded to me, so I get one or two calls every week. Let's see, Ridgeline Park Construction, we met with D W A. We're waiting for the, I don't know if anyone's heard of the youth ladies dresses? Have you?
Of course.
Yeah, good. It's a protected little orchid that uh, its main habitat is surrounding wetland areas. And our park impacts a little bit of that area that's identified as habitat for the youth ladies dresses. Part of the, well, because we're federal, they, we're partially federally funded. Um, we're responsible to go through um, a NEPA, full NEPA. And we made application to disturb the wetlands to do this park work and they rejected it because we didn't have it. Uh, documented on the youth lady's dress and so, one of the other things happened with this youth lady's dresses, it only blooms between like. The end of July and the beginning of August. And if it doesn't bloom, we have to wait, we have to monitor it for like three years, so let's cross our fingers that it blooms, we can identify it. Delineate it and try to avoid it, so. Um, D W A, they're very aware of it, we, we've uh identified the areas of possible habitat. And most of the park work is out of that area, there's just a couple of corners, the parking lot's part of it, and, and a little bit of the walkway. And so they, they don't, they think they can work around it pretty well. Um, so they still intend to get most of the work done by the end of this year. So you're laughing? Just another glitch, right? Um, thirteen hundreds. What was that? All right, thirteen hundred west half road. They're in design right now, I haven't seen much going, but uh the next step is we delineated the wetland. So our next step is to get a sixty percent at least drying, and then we can find how much impact we make to that wetland. Once we determine that, that, then we'll be able to determine which permitting process to go through. Hopefully it's less than a tenth of an acre. Um, that's the easiest one, it's just a notification, um, if it's more than a tenth of an acre, then we have to go through a certain permitting process, so um, hopefully the youth ladies' trust isn't there either. And then the other half road would be uh Firefly Estates, that south portion, that's under construction. We ran into a problem there too. Um, uh, and when they did the excavation, they found an artesian well. Yeah, so there, there's a change order in the works, uh, it created some soft spot, there's about forty-five hundred dollars in uh stabilizing the soils. City crews are actually gonna go in and cap this well, and the way we're gonna do that is grab some big cobbles and just kind of push them down into the soft soils, right, you can see exactly where there's water's forming. But you wanna compact those soils back, and then we're gonna cap it with concrete, so in soil mechanics, just kind of give you an idea. There, there's water everywhere in Nibbly, right? And the, the ground actually holds it down and it, all that pressure of the ground above kind of keeps the water in check, as soon as you start removing some of that, that ground it releases that pressure that's on it, and, and water is able to flow, and it, pore pressures increase, because you don't have this soil resisting that, so what happened was when they removed that it, it started flowing. So, I'm.
This is how my six inch irrigation water leak, seven feet below grade, went from a small leak to a bigger leak.
Most likely, yes, so the idea here with this plan of attack is to reestablish some weight down there. Put the rocks to kind of push the pores back together, all the soil pores and voids. And then put this concrete on there to put that pressure back, and then they'll build the road about that. I'm pretty confident it'll work, we'll also as a backup plan, put a perforated drain over to a nearby canal box. We got permission to do that from the canal company, so um, altogether, we should have that done in a couple of weeks, and then they can proceed with that road. That's all I had, is there any questions for me? It's just money.
Um, we had a new member of staff, she started on Monday, um a new front office staff member in a council table, uh, Sage Elesson. She is awesome, so far we're really enjoying her, she is yeah, adjectives in my head that just flew right up. She's picking things up quick, quickly, she's proactive, and she is not afraid to ask questions. And we just feel like she's gonna be a great asset to our front office team as well as Nibbly City. Um, we've already posted for the water wastewater um position that the council approved in the budget. And had two applicants. We're gonna um be um interviewing them on Monday, both are very qualified as well. And then at our last front office staff meeting. All of the front office staff asked me to share with the council how much we appreciate your support of staff, that it's truly seen and felt. And that they asked me to convey that message to you, so now I've done that.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Well, Garrett, uh, so we're in the middle of treatments right now, it started Tuesday, um, Tuesday, Thursday, I believe they're they're gone, well, because of the orange throughout. They are scheduled to finish up the next week, and then the end of the month. We haven't got a for sure, for sure schedule on it, we have a company coming back into warranty of unscrewed stuff for us two years ago. We're not for sure on the details on how in-depth that's gonna be, right now we're understanding of spring, everything that they did two years ago. So, we will see, that's the case. Thirty-two hundred's gonna be a nightmare for that, so. Like I say, we're just chins in the uh, kind of getting all that tied together, so we'll start seeing that out as well. So, I'm glad the notices are working great, it's always these guys, I think, that are in here now do a fantastic job, it's their notifications and working with residents and they've been really professional to work with, and that's that's what I'm after, so. Thank you for the water leak, Jared and those water guys put a lot of thought and effort into that type of stuff, so when it's game day, he's on. So, it's kind of fun to see the lake dry up down by the house, that was very encouraging as well, that made my day. I've had many conversations with them folks, so that was very encouraging. The same time as that was happening, Tom called on this or Tyler called on a leak down there, so I was thinking the water was really getting down there too, right? It was traveling water lines, so.
Well, all right, thank you. Anything else, Curtis?
Let's do a really, really quick update, um. Yeah, this week was fun, we just ran everything going, we had four programs start this week, so we had our ultimate frisbee, pickleball, nerf tag, and um, so I just wanted to say thank you to council for your support in the very many roles that you do, not just as council, but as citizens as well to allow us to do the things we do for a community, so we are very, very grateful, and that's, I feel like an understatement to say, but very grateful for all of your support to help us do that, so. That's all I have.
Good job, staff, council, thank you very much, anything else?